We all good?
Julie, roll call please.
Spectrum Channel 3 and ATT U-verse Channel 99, and also online at youtube.com/CostaMesaTV. If you would like to participate in tonight's meeting via the Zoom webinar, the login information is available on the city, on the planning commission agenda for tonight. You follow those instructions, you can find the agenda on the city's website. You can also participate telephonically by dialing 1-669-900-6833, and the webinar ID is 94233322633, pass code 045967. During the public comment period, press star nine to add yourself to the queue and wait for city staff to announce your name, phone number, and unmute your line when it is your turn to speak. You will be limited to three minutes in your comments. Having said that, this takes us to public comment. Public comment is for those wishing to speak to the planning commission tonight on items that are within the planning commission's jurisdiction but are not on tonight's agenda. So again, public comment is for items that you wish to bring to the commission's attention, which are within our purview, but they are not on tonight's agenda. Ms. Green or Julie, do we have any? Public comments?
If you would like to speak during public comments, if you could please raise your hand. It's the button at the bottom. Of the part, there you go.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to allow. Yafim, you may speak, please unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening, my name is Yafam Tsaluk, I'm a civil engineer and applicant on item, first item, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, sir, and we'll have you speak during that item, thank you much for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak during public comment? Again, these are on items not on tonight's agenda. Anyone else? Okay, I see no one raising their hand. No one on the telephone, Ms. Green?
Chair, we do not have anybody.
Okay, we'll close public comment then. And that will take us to planning commissioner comments and suggestions, and we'll start tonight with Commissioner Torje.
Hi, I'm glad to be with everyone tonight, I don't have a lot of comments. There is an item that has, that is up in the first topic of conversation in the first item that I'd like to discuss, but I'll bring it up during item one, other than that, glad to be here with folks tonight.
Very, very good, thank you, Commissioner Perkins.
No comments this evening, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Colbert?
A quick comment, so good afternoon, everyone. Or evening at this hour, I guess, I was out the last meeting, but I want to just thank Commissioner Zick and others that acknowledged and recognized life Congressman John Lewis, who passed on July 17th pancreatic cancer, and just a quick reflection on him, he was a congressman that will, well, of course, be remembered for his contributions to the civil rights movement, but also his commitment to just holding our nation accountable to the promises that were made so long ago for all Americans to form a more perfect union. I had the opportunity to watch his funeral service on C-SPAN, it was an incredible service, and after just listening to three former United States presidents discuss their personal relationships, both the differences with him as well, it was just refreshing to hear just the time in our democracy when we can disagree upon our, our direction of how to form that more perfect union, but in ways which were respectful and diminishing. So that was really refreshing to hear, just a reminder of a life that you can live to where it brings some, some people, so many people together, regardless of their differences, as, as opposed to driving them apart. And I was just thinking about the quote which has been shared over and over, you know, throughout the past weeks and months, since he's been sick and things, about making good trouble. And I just want to remind everyone of that quote, it says, "Do not get lost in a sea of despair. Be hopeful, be optimistic, a struggle is not the struggle of a day, a week, a month, or a year. It is the struggle of a lifetime. Never be afraid to make some noise and get into good trouble, necessary trouble." And I'm just excited to continue to make good trouble and necessary trouble with each and every one of you. And I'll close with this, I also have not been able to thank Barry publicly for his leadership in the department. And so I just wanted to say that I enjoyed working with him and look forward to working with the acting director, Ms. Lee. And also just wanted to note that I think in this point, this means that we have a, a really, a city that is being largely led by women, and I'm really excited about that, that we have city attorney, city manager, mayor, and also a pretty female majority council, I think that's exciting, it says something about our city. It's signaling about the growth and progress that we made probably two decades, two decades ago, you probably would not have seen. So I'm excited, Ms. Lee, congratulations on acting role and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Russell.
Sure, thank you, just a couple of things, a reminder that they've shortened the amount of time that we have to fulfill our, our census form. So please, if you haven't filled yours out, fill it out, have your neighbors, your friends, family, people across the nation. Make sure people are filling that out, it impacts our school funding, our congressional representation, all kinds of things, so fill it out, take the few minutes to do that. And secondly, don't forget to support restaurants that are opening, some of them are being really clever and about and creative in making space outdoors, and so pop by, have a meal with them. And hopefully, this will be an opportunity for us to rethink how we do our, our public spaces. It would be really nice to have more alfresco permanent restaurants, more pedestrian friendly areas, we have a great temper zone here, Mediterranean climate, we could be outside in about nine months out of the year easily. So anyway, go support restaurants and, and help support Costa Mesa, that's it, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell, Commissioner Zick.
No comments tonight, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir, Vice Chair Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing terribly substantive, I just wanted to acknowledge, as, as I said before, kind of bittersweet goodbye to Barry Curtis, but I want to welcome Jennifer Lee to the helm and look forward to working with her over the coming months and hopefully coming years, so that's all for now.
Very good, thank you all, one question and a comment. The comment is, I, I, I want to kind of echo or piggyback off of Commissioner Russell's comments. I've heard from several restaurant operators in the city who have been pleased with the responsiveness of our city staff in terms of working through the permit process to get them the permits they need to operate outdoors. If you run around out in town and see the restaurants that have, as, as Commissioner Russell said, creatively set up outdoor spaces, I think we're discovering that we, we actually do have the room and we have the capability to permanent, create kind of permanent alfresco settings, which is what gives, in my mind, is always give Europe its charm, so I, I just want to compliment staff for all the hard work they have in processing the permits to help our restaurant operators create really nice outdoor spaces to dine. Then the only other kind of a housekeeping question to Jennifer or Julie, has the letter that the commission authorized relative to the human relations and equity committee been transmitted to the city council?
Chair, if I may, let me check on that with the city manager's office tomorrow.
Okay, great, I look forward to hearing back on that.
Thank you.
With that, and yes, Ms. Lee, I'm, I'm very happy that you're in the acting director's role, and I look forward to working with you as we move forward, so not a hard choice, but an excellent choice. And that will take us to the consent calendar, we have no items on the consent calendar tonight, and that will take us to public hearings. For members of the public, upfront, staff has requested that we continue, public hearing item number three, which is a application for a conditional use permit to allow a tattoo parlor at 1775 Newport Boulevard, Suite A. So I will make a motion to continue that item to a date uncertain, is there a second?
Second, yeah.
So the chair moved to continue to date uncertain, seconded by Commissioner Colbert, Julie, please color roll.
Chair DeRico.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harlan.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Perkins.
Nay.
That was a nay, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Commissioner Russell.
Aye.
Commissioner Torje.
Aye.
Commissioner Zick.
Aye.
That motion carried six one with Commissioner Perkins voting no.
Okay, thank you very much, so again, for members of the public, public hearing item number three has been continued to a date uncertain. And that will bring us then to public hearing item number one, Julie, if you could read that into the record.
Public hearing item number one, zoning application 20-15 for a minor conditional use permit to allow a counseling use and to deviate from parking requirements for an individual and group counseling use located at 711 West 17th Street, Suite D5. Please note that we have received a total of eight public comments that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call to report any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any communications to report? Okay, don't see any hands raised, so I will turn this over to Chris Jaeger, our newest assistant planner in the city of Costa Mesa, he's relatively new, he's been with us for five months, but this is his first opportunity to present to the planning commission tonight, so, Mr. Jaeger, welcome, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and good evening to Chair and Commissioners. Let me just pull up the slideshow. Okay. So the application before you, this is a request for a minor conditional use permit to permit an individual and group counseling office.
Yeah, Mr. Jaeger, I think this is the wrong slideshow.
Look at that. Here we go.
That looks, that looks good.
This looks correct. So, as I was saying, this is a minor conditional use permit to permit an individual and group counseling office and to deviate from the required parking at 711 West 17th Street and Suite D5. So the site, it is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of 17th Street and Pomona Avenue. It also has frontage to the south on Parrod Street. It is approximately 350,000 square feet and contains nine buildings, which are all industrial condominiums. In total, there's 298 parking spaces on the lot. The property, it is zoned general industrial and also has a general plan land use designation of light industry. The surrounding properties, they're all developed as industrial, other than the live-work development to the east across Pomona. So this minor conditional use permit, it is to allow for a counseling office within the MG zone and to deviate from the parking requirements for an individual and group counseling use. Counseling office uses, they are not explicitly listed in the city's land use matrix or the parking requirements. However, to provide clarification on this use, the zoning administrator, they determine that individual and family counseling uses are most similar to general office uses and that group counseling uses are most similar to trade and vocational schools. And this is both in respect to the land use and the parking requirements. As such, individual and couples counseling, they can be permitted in the MG zone, as can other general office uses with a minor conditional use permit, as can group counseling and other trade and vocational schools, again, with a minor conditional use permit. So the use, it does involve administrative services as well as individual, couples, and group counseling services. The use would occupy the Suite D5 within the existing industrial condo, and the proposed floor plan for the use, it includes a lobby, five individual offices, one group counseling room, which is approximately 215 square feet, and it would also include a kitchen, two bathrooms. The individual offices would be used for administrative services as well as individual counseling sessions. Administrative service hours are proposed to be Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, with the majority of individual couples and group counseling occurring after 5:00 PM when clients are off work. The virtual sessions, they are to occur via telephone and telehealth throughout the day, and individual and couples sessions are proposed to occur during the day with one session at a time. All of the uses are proposed to be conducted within the suite. During normal business hours, it's anticipated that there will be two staff on site conducting administrative services, and additionally, during programming hours, counseling participants and counselors would be on site. The proposed use is by appointment only, and walk-up clients would not be permitted. Potential concerns for this type of use in an industrial zone, they're primarily related to the parking demand, specifically for group counseling portion of the use, since this does involve a large number of people arriving and departing the location at the same time. And the use, it is to be conducted entirely inside, so it should have no to minimal impacts on the surrounding businesses or residences. In addition, according to the applicant, the center does have regularly scheduled janitorial services, which would keep it clean and tidy. In the event of a smoking break, the applicant has indicated that there is a designated smoking area on the west side of the property, and as a result, and as conditioned, the outdoor smoking area, it is located on the opposite end of the property from the live-work units across Pomona Avenue, and per state law, it's a minimum of 20 feet away from any openable doors and windows of adjoining businesses. So parking, the parking requirements for group counseling uses are 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. And the applicant has indicated that the group counseling room, it is 215 square feet, and therefore, it would require approximately two parking spaces. The remainder of the suite is classified as general office, which is parked at four spaces per 1,000 square feet, which in total, seven parking spaces are required for the proposed use. The existing site, it is legal non-conforming with parking, and it is provided there is about two spaces per 1,000 square feet. Under current code requirements, 440 spaces are required, however, 298 exist. The industrial rate for current, and thus, the parking rate for current industrial, it is three spaces per 1,000 square feet. The CCNRs for the industrial condominium complex, they have established allocated parking spaces in front of each suite, and in addition to the allocated spaces, the applicant has indicated that there are 148 unreserved spaces throughout the property. So it should be noted that the reserved parking, it is established by the CCNRs, and it is not recognized by the city. The city looks at total parking spaces for the lot regardless of if the spaces are assigned or not. That being said, the CCNRs, it does allow the subject Suite D5 to have two allocated spaces, and the owner of the space also owns Suite D6, and they have indicated that they would make their two spaces available to the applicant, since they park their vehicles inside the garage at the rear of the unit. After the report was published, the applicant did provide another letter from D4 indicating that the use of their parking could also be used, and just before the meeting, I received another letter from Suite B12 indicating the same thing. According to the applicant, the majority of the group counseling members According to the applicant, the majority of the group counseling members, they are utilizing free transportation services, which are provided by CalOptima. And most are unable to drive because they cannot afford cars or because they are not allowed to legally drive. In addition, the closest bus stops, they are located at the corner of West Seventeenth and Pomona, and that services the fifty five line. As proposed, the use would be. Primarily operated with virtual appointments and counseling sessions taking place via telephone and telehealth. Based on the information provided, staff believes that the applicant has demonstrated sufficient parking to accommodate. Two full time staff and one in person appointment at a time, which is included as a condition of approval. As conditioned, individual and couples counseling may occur during the day, as long as there is no more than one session occurring at a time. Which would allow for the two parking spaces to be utilized by administration. One by counselor and one by councilly. Counseling, both individual and group, it will primarily take place via telephone and telehealth. But it will also take place in the office after the hours of five PM. And it's not anticipated that parking will be an issue after five because the other businesses in the immediate vicinity. Close at five and. According to the applicant, the group session, the group participants, they do not drive. Staff has included. Conditions of approval. To ensure that the use would operate as proposed and that the individual and couple sessions may occur during the day only if suite D six's parking is available. However, if any parking shortages or other parking related problems develop, the business operator. Will be required to institute any appropriate operational measures necessary to minimize or eliminate the problem. This could include, but it's not limited to reducing operational hours of business, reducing the number of clients. Or other similar measures as determined by the director. So those conditions. The hours of operations for administrative staff to employees shall be limited to Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM. And programming hours of operations for individual couples and group counseling. Shall be permitted anytime for telephone or telehealth appointments. And between five PM and eleven PM Monday through Friday or between eight AM and eleven PM Saturday and Sunday for in person appointments. In person, individual and couples counseling may. Occur during daytime hours if the allocated parking from D six remains available. And only one individual in couples counseling session may occur at a time, thereby limiting the demand to four cars. In addition, there are conditions which require the the use to be indoors, but smoking breaks take place at designated smoking areas. And if parking issues arise, they must be alleviated. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopts a resolution to find the project categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA. As well as to approve the zoning application subject to conditions of approval. So I can answer any questions here. Otherwise, I can hand it over to the applicant, David Welch.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jaeger, for your report. Commissioners, are there any questions? And I see. Commissioner Zick and then Commissioner Torje.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chris. Great job on your first staff report. I couldn't tell it was written by somebody new to the city when I went through it. So excellent job. I do have a few questions. And I kind of break down my questions into two categories. One category is associated with the. Minor conditional use permit. Related to the use. And the second group of questions relate to the minor conditional use permit requirement associated with the parking. Deviation. And so let me start with the use question first. And so. Because it is an office. Use. Or counseling use, that is what's driving the requirement for a minor conditional use permit, correct?
Correct. The zoning administrator determination determine that counseling. For individuals and couples is most related to general office use and that requires a MCP in MG zone.
Okay.
Same for group counseling, trade and vocational schools is the most similar use and that is also required for an MCP.
Excellent. And it seems like. Kind of intuitively, that would be appropriate considering the zoning is industrial and this. By maybe some view would be incompatible use, so understanding. Conditional use permit requirement. There was a notation by. I think it's by the applicant on handwritten page ten, there's a letter from. Wellmore. Psychology Group, I believe that's the applicant. And in that. They make reference to the fact that there are other businesses within the community. Operating as nonindustrial general office space use. My question is. Are we aware of what those other uses are and do they hold minor conditional use permits for their use?
So I don't have that information before me. However, my discussions with the zoning administrator, it did reveal that the. General office use within industrial areas. More recently, over the last few years, has become a more common occurrence as demands have changed.
Okay. So fair answer. Okay, with regard to the parking. I think I start my questions from a, from a perspective of the. What, what I'm wondering is. Why we even care about the parking situation there? That's not the question. That's what I'm wondering. The reason why I'm wondering that. Is. If the current code requirement for parking of that site, if it were built today, is three per thousand. And it's only built out at two per thousand. Then it seems to me that every single application for use for that site. From here until eternity. Would need a deviation for parking. Because by definition, the site is underparked, so it's no surprise that. This use is challenged to meet the parking requirement. My guess is the majority of these existing occupants might also. Be struggling with meeting what would be the current parking requirement. So my first question is. When did the three per thousand requirement. Come into. Into our. Codes.
Jennifer, do you have the answer for that?
I don't. I don't have an exact date when that was requirement was put into place, certainly after approval of. This development. I don't have an exact date, but what I would say is that. If. A use went into place that had a three per thousand parking requirement, despite the fact that this is a legal nonconforming site. We would not process a minor conditional use permit for a deviation from parking requirements. That requirement kicks in when there is a use that's proposed that has above a three per thousand parking requirement. So it's a little different when dealing with legal nonperforming sites.
Got it. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Chris, one thing you commented on. Which I'm familiar with is the fact that the city doesn't, that there's CCNRs in place for this. Development and that the city doesn't recognize those. Those rules. And so I get that. And what I'm wondering about is if those rules did not make a distinction between. Reserved and unreserved parking. And it was just wide open parking. How would we be in a position to make a determination? That. This use requires seven parking stalls. And there aren't enough. Wouldn't we almost by definition say, well, there. There have to be, yeah, there must be at least seven. I mean, it's all wide open parking, so it must be okay. My question is, if it was all unreserved parking. How would we assess the compliance with parking requirement?
So the standard procedure for determining parking typically involves a parking study. Which is a consultant from the outside that comes in and looks at the existing uses within the site compared to the parking that is available. They crunch all the numbers for the square footage, the uses and what parking is available and is not available. And then if the excess, a number of spaces. Equals that seven or more. Then they would not deviate from the requirement. If it was less than seven, then they would deviate from the requirement.
Okay, and so in this case, we didn't do. A study like that. And can you tell me why we didn't? Is it because there's an allocated or a reserved and unreserved? Or is there a different reason why we didn't do that study?
Part of the study is that they also go into the parking lots and examine the spaces that are available and not available. Because of COVID nineteen, obviously, most parking spaces are empty. So the, the. Recommendation that staff came up with, it was based on all of the information put forth from the application. We didn't find it necessary to require a parking study.
Got it. Chris, thank you very much. That's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Commissioner Torje.
Thank you so much. Chris, good to meet you. Glad to have you here with us tonight. I had a couple of questions. Related to the parking and Commissioner Zick's question brought. Last question, but one closer to mind. Have there been minor conditional use permits for uses that are. That would be above the parking requirement that have been granted? So. Let's say, has there been another use where there would be required seven or ten spaces, but we've allowed them to only have five?
Yes, and these are typically granted because there are unique operating characteristics about the facility. So in this case, the unique characteristics are that they would have. One individual or a couple session at a time during the day when parking is most impacted. On the, on the property and group sessions and other. Unlimited sessions, I guess, would be after five PM where the other businesses are closed, excuse me. And parking would be more available.
So let me re-ask the question. Have we granted? Have we granted exemptions for parking within this development where we. Similar to this before, where we say that there's this many spaces available and this many for like. Gosh, I feel like I'm not asking the question well, but I want to say, is there more deviations from parking for parking from this in this? In this specific development? Like, have there been other? Other uses that have been allowed deviations in this development?
Great question. Offhand, I do not know. I can find out and get back to you. Jennifer, do you know by chance?
Jennifer, you're muted.
Oh, I'm muted. If you'll give us a few moments, we'll do a quick search. There. Essentially, for an MCP of this type in an industrial condominium, we're doing an address by address search. So what we did was a spot check of this area in general. For any office use that's proposed on this property because of its industrial zoning. And it would require a minor conditional use permit, both because of the use and because of the industrial parking requirement versus the office parking requirement. So I think it's safe to say that there are minor conditional use permits that are issued for any offices that are located on this property. In terms of an itemization of how many there are, we'll try to do a quick count.
Yeah, and the question, my question is based in. Whether or not we have. If we had not had any minor conditional use permits and we just had all of the applicants with the amount of parking that would be needed in that. In that parking lot, if we would have like fifty or a hundred spots. Extra actually needed if we followed the standards. And so. That was the basis of my question to see if there were other space, other units that were. Technically needed more parking but didn't have them. My next question is. Related to, I just wanted some clarification. On the. On our conditions of approval. And so are we allowing for, so handwritten page six. The hours of operation are between eight AM and five PM to staff. One counselor and then one individual who would be. Individual or couple for that session. Or. So that would technically be four parking spots or is there?
Yes, so.
I think I was just confused about how many would be happening during that time.
New condition number three, it is based on the four parking spots. So it would be the two administrative staff, one additional counselor and one councilor or a couple. And those four spots are based on the two which are allocated in the CCNRs to suite D five as well as. Suite D six, which is the same property owner as suite D five.
So they would have three to four offices empty during the day. Where we would not allow counseling to happen.
Theoretically, yes.
Okay.
A quick check, I just found two other minor conditional use permits for the property in our system. I can't say if they are still in business or still around, but there have been two that have been. In our system.
Okay. And my next question is. A comment and maybe a motion I'll make later tonight, which is, we keep seeing. Group counseling, Jennifer's smiling at me, group counseling called as educational and trade and vocational and I. I just, I smile because it's confusing to everybody and then we have to like fit it into this. Odd use. And so I think there's going to be a point coming up where we, this isn't. A use that comes up enough where we can actually have a designation for it. And allow ourselves to think through that. So that's my, my questions and my comments. For tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Perkins and then Commissioner Colbert.
Great. Thank you and definitely welcome, Mr. Jaeger. I just have one quick question more in the vein of sort of making sure we're doing our homework. I understand that. The owner of the, the business, we have a business here that's been in Costa Mesa for a number of years, I think more than twenty, I saw. And I just wanted to check up and see, have there been any code or other sort of enforcement issues with Wellmore in their current location, which I believe is on. Bristol or other sort of complaints that we have.
So I did, I did check in with the code enforcement and there were no code enforcement cases specifically for that suite. However, it is a big complex there and there's various other minor. Code enforcement cases that have been in case or in place. I also checked with police and over the past three years, there have been. There was three calls from the unit. One was a no answer and two were just minor. Almost an animal. So, nothing, nothing major.
Okay, great. So no, no major concerns or red flags that you saw. Awesome. Thank you very much. That was all I have for Mr. Jaeger.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Colbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome, Mr. Jaeger. Good to meet you without a mask. And. I have a quick question. I think more questions just for the applicant, but in terms of my question for staff. To understand, Mr. Jaeger, I think you stated that suites D five. The D four, D six and B twelve were all allocating two spaces, which would total eight parking spaces at the site. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and. Do you, and maybe this is an applicant, a question for the applicant, can you confirm the. The latest client that would be at the site, just in terms of operation, I think the hours are limited to. I think the hours are limited to 11:00 PM, but just out of clarification, is there, did he indicate, or he or she indicate uh, what those hours, uh, would be in terms of like accepting clients or the next person, the latest a person could be on site?
We, we included the 11:00 PM condition just as a standard time for businesses to quiet down. Um, but I think the applicant can answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, just as an operational question, I tried to search. Do you know what time LCTA, um, stopped running in that area or if there are bus lines, uh, within that area to pick up and drop off? For clients?
I don't know the exact time. I can look it up really quick. Um, but there is the, the 55 line which goes down 17th. And then there's also, uh, another line, just a couple blocks away that they could hop on, but let me check for the time for you.
Okay, now that's that only because I believe one of the le- letters stated something about vagrants or individuals that might be hanging out. So I just wanted to ensure that there is adequate service in that area, um, for, to, since that most of the clients will be dependent upon travel in that way. Um, my last question to staff is related to, um, kind of piggybacking off of Commissioner Torje's question. Um, I think I've made this request a couple of times, uh, so I'm really smiling and I was glad to see this again, that this use is becoming occurred. Um, if we were to update the land use matrix to reflect, um, this use particularly on our use chart, um, and identified, um, parking requirements for this type of use as a specified use, would the commission still see these? Uh, would the zoning administration still have to can, uh, send those up to us? Or would it be more of a standardized process at the zoning administration level that we wouldn't see? For group, group council specifically?
Commissioner Colbert, uh, if we were to move forward with, uh, a code change that would identify specifically group counseling as its own, um, use type in the land use matrix, at that point, we would determine whether or not a conditional use permit, a minor conditional use permit as, as is the case now, or whether the use would be permitted by right and in what zones. So we could have that conversation. From staff's perspective, we would like to see these continue to be minor conditional use permits in industrial zones. And it's one of the reasons that we have the zoning administrator determination for making that connection for us since it is explicit in the land use matrix. So that would be our recommendation at that time. Um, but that's a conversation that we would have as part of the code change.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. I have no more questions, Mr. Chairman.
And just really.
Commissioner.
Bus schedule, uh, the last buses at approximately 10:00 or 10:00 PM.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Uh, Mr. Jaeger, um, I'm gonna refer you to handwritten page 22. It's actually the, um, site plan and then the schematic of the actual floor plan of the suite. And I want to look at that in reference to the May 19, 2008 zoning administrators determination. Parking, uh, and I'll point you to paragraph four, parking requirements for individual and family counseling services will be the same. That's for general office uses. Currently four spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. So I want to have you look at the floor plan and ask you if the two what look like either foyers with stairwells that are Xed out, if those are common area? Um, or if they are part of the leasable space to, uh, Wellmore?
Um, the applicant has indicated that they are not part of the suite. Um, if there's any indication based on the built environment, I'm guessing it is, um, the, the storage garages at the back of the units.
Oh, okay, okay.
You can probably, um, clarify that.
Okay. Yeah, I will need clarification on that. I'm trying to, it, so did staff make a determination that those garages were not part of the gross floor area calculation? And if you did, what, what was the reasoning for that determination?
For the, the floor area, um, there were no building permits to be found for the site. Um, so we couldn't get it off of that. So the floor area, it came from, um, the applicant and the, um, the county assessor. So that's where the 1,400 number came from.
So if the applicant's listening, not, not to answer it yet, or the property owner, what I'd like to know is if that, uh, those Xed out spaces are, um, something that the applicant or the tenant is paying for via the lease? Um, that's one question. And then do we have, so I'm assuming group counseling means three or more people versus individual or couples counseling?
Yeah, I think the, uh, the standard way that staff has been looking at it is that it's individual and couples counseling. And if it's greater than that, it would be group counseling.
So it'd be three or more essentially.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer.
Unless it's a unique marriage relationship. Anyway, um, so in terms of fire code, do we have limit on the number of people that can be in a certain size room in a business? So if, if we're looking at a 200 and some odd square foot group counseling room, is there a limit to how many people could be in that room safely? From a fire code perspective?
Yes, every, every occupancy of any commercial or industrial building has a maximum number of people who can be in it, including the specific rooms. Um, I don't have the exact number, um, but we could, uh, work with the building department to figure that out for you.
Okay, I'm probably assuming that in code requirements, I want to make sure that if this is approved, that the conditions reflect that the occupancy of the group counseling room cannot exceed code requirements, uh, fire code requirements?
So it would be code number five, um, on handwritten page number seven. Uh, it does indicate that the applicant should comply with all, um, required building codes.
Okay, I get that. Uh, I think I may want to stipulate and find out what that number is for a 200 square foot room and stipulate that in the conditions of the specific capacity of that room. Does anybody know when this, actual this condominium complex was built? What year? Just a curiosity question more than anything else.
Well, Mr. Jaeger's taking a look, Chair. Um, we did have a copy of, um, uh, the CCNRs for this, um, location, so we'll likely take it, take the date off of that document. As, uh, Chris indicated, we had a tough time finding historical records for building permits specifically, but the CCNRs will give us a good, um, proxy for that.
Okay. Okay, okay, um, and so the CCNRs don't reflect anything about, so the applicant's claiming that there's 148 unreserved spaces or essentially shared parking. Um, we don't know that for a fact. So there are assigned spaces, I'm assuming, and then the balance of it is shared parking? According to the applicant.
That's correct. We did take a look at the CCNRs and it did include provisions related to reserved spaces. Um, but as we, as we said, the reserved spaces is something that the city doesn't recognize. We're looking at total parking spaces. But we did review the CCNRs and those provisions were included. So there appears to be a number of reserved and unreserved spaces.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. I will, uh, Commissioner Colbert, did you have an additional question?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. One additional question, Ms. Lee or Mr. Jaeger? Um, just a clarification. Uh, so the agreements of those spaces with the adjacent, uh, suite owners between, uh, those, uh, those tenants. In the case that those tenants, um, decide to no longer operate, do those agreements continue or what happens in the case, and does he become noncompliant like? Because I think he's meeting the requirements with those, um, but without them, there seems that, they just kind of, I just have this question now.
Sure. So from the perspective of, um, uh, the idea of reserved spaces and then adjacent owner allocating their reserved spaces. From the city's perspective, again, we're looking at this from a holistic parking perspective, not necessarily, um, which units have reserved spaces. So, um, the fact that these owners have, um, indicated that they intend to leave vacant these spaces that are associated with their unit from a staff's perspective, that just indicates that there appears to be capacity. Um, not that there is a specific legal, legal agreement or a reported agreement. So we're looking at the totality of the evidence presented, not necessarily, um, something that's a, a, a deed restricted parking agreement, for example.
But are we using that to, um, contribute to our analysis that they have these agreements?
Um, what we have used in our conditions of approval to make this determination is that, um, we tied the number of, um, staff and the number of appointments to the availability of the parking, um, of the adjacent suites. So if at any time the suites that have indicated that they're, that they will not be occupying their parking spaces, if those change hands and all of a sudden those tenants decide to use their parking spaces, then the applicant for the conditions of approval needs to adjust and not have in-person appointments.
Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful.
Just to.
Okay.
Here's.
Mr. Jaeger.
Sorry, uh, just to answer your question, the, the CCNRs, they were assigned in January 1982.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is on the line and if so, um, and I see you're, there's David and you're, uh, good to go, sir.
Good evening. Um, so is this the part where I just talk about my business or answer questions?
If you would like, you can, I will have some questions, I'm sure, but if you want to give us some background on your business, uh, and the nature of your request and, uh, the reasonings behind your request, that'd be great.
So my name is Dr. David Welch. I'm a psychologist here, um, in Orange County. I've been, um, at, I've been, uh, practicing in the city of Costa Mesa since 1996. I've owned the business, um, since 2004. We were at the same property on Bristol Street since 2001. Um, so we've got quite a long history of doing business in the city of Costa Mesa. Um, we've had zero complaints, uh, for parking. I included in my application a letter from a 15-year neighbor who, um, supported our assertion that we've not caused any problems for any of our neighbors. Um, we run a very small program. Um, I know one of the, one of the concerns was that we are a large residential program. We do not provide any residential services. This is outpatient counseling and therapy only. Um, we, uh, do not have any large vans or buses that bring people to the property. They come, uh, like Chris said, via public transportation. Um, or they utilize the CalOptima transportation system, which is kind of like an Uber-like contract. Um, the CalOptima assigns a, um, an individual's car to come and pick the beneficiary up from their home or place of residence and bring them to the property, drop the client off and then they leave. And then, um, they're picked up when the service is finished. So we do not have any experience of our clients hanging out on the property or loitering or causing any problems for any of our neighbors. Um, they typically get their service and then they go home, um, immediately following the service. Um, uh, as Chris said, about 95% of our clients, um, do not drive. They use, uh, public transportation or this, this, um, CalOptima insurance, uh, transportation. So we, we typically don't, we, we've never had any parking issues. Um, we don't anticipate any parking issues. Uh, Chris was just slightly off in the numbers. So we currently have four spaces for, for our unit D5, the two reserved spaces. And then the garage behind our unit has two spaces. So we have four for our own unit. And then, um, D6 and D4 have allowed us to use their two reserved spaces in front as they're using their own garages and then also B12. So we have a total of 10, um, parking spaces that we can u- utilize. We don't anticipate ever needing to u- utilize 10. Our groups, um, typically max out at five. And, uh, maybe two of them will have a car of their own. Um, most of the clients, uh, and we also have the ability to stagger, um, who comes for what service. So if there ever would be a parking issue, we can definitely stagger the clients that need the parking spaces to the after-hours, um, appointments or not schedule, uh, uh, let's say a group of two or three with people who are all driving. Um, but again, since we've secured 10 parking spaces, we don't anticipate that there will be any, um, undue influence on any of the businesses surrounding us or the property as a whole. We are currently Costa Mesa's only contracted medical provider. And we're only one of two contract providers for all of Orange County that treat adolescent clients. So we, we believe that we provide a very much needed service. Um, our experience in the past has been, our services help clients, um, succeed in life and they, they help clients become more productive members of society rather than, um, what some of the concerns are is that homeless people or vagrants are going to be hanging out on the, on the property or living in the, in the, the surrounding areas. Uh, on the contrary, we give our clients, um, coping skills that they need in order to be able to stop using chemicals or stop having family conflicts. Um, a- and like I said in the very beginning, we, we don't do just substance abuse. We do, um, private therapy. We do couples therapy. We do, um, uh, other family issues, uh, childhood trauma issues. So we are not a primary substance abuse program. It's a, we're a well-rounded program that sees a number of clients for very many different issues. So we're not concerned, um, like I said, we've, we've been in business for, um, 20 sub-years. We've never had a complaint from our neighbors. We have a written, very, very, um, productive, good neighbor policy. Um, a- and as maybe you can tell from three of our neighbors already coming forward to provide us with some of their parking spaces um, in order to help us out with this, um, conditional, our minor conditional use permit. It, it indicates that, that, um, there is a support for us in the, on the property. And there, there recognized that we do provide a very much needed service, especially in this time of COVID where people's anxieties are, are increasing and, um, a, a need for more coping skills and emotional support during this time.
Okay. Did you want me?
Did you have any?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you have any additional comments? I know there's, I, I have a few questions for you and I'm sure do as well.
Well, I, I would like to request, so, um, Chris and I've talked quite a bit about th- this whole process and, um, I disagree with one of the conditions that he, uh, the city would like for us to have is that we, we cannot do any group services during the daytime. And I, I would like to request that the planning commissioners, um, amend that to allow us to be able to do that, particularly in light of that we do have more than adequate parking available um, for those few clients of ours that do drive. It would be financially disastrous for our company to not be able to provide services during the daytime. Um, Commissioner Colbert had asked about the, the last, um, uh, time of our service. We typically end around 8:00, 8:30. So, um, there's not a lot of evening hours for us to be able to provide a full day's worth of. there's not a lot of evening hours for us to be able to provide a full day's worth of billable services that would enable us to remain financially solvent.
So you read the staff report, you've read the conditions of approval, and you disagree with condition of approval number three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I have a quick couple of questions, and then there's a couple of commissioners that also have some commission questions, I see if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
First is, how large a space do you currently have in Bristol? Do you know how many square feet it is?
I believe it was pretty similar to the current one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess maybe eleven to twelve hundred. Square feet.
And typically, how many patients, individual, couples, groups do you see in a day, typically?
I'm gonna guess maybe one an hour, so eight to ten.
And that includes group counsel?
No, for individual, those were for individuals, and the groups are, so we typically do two small groups in the morning, so four to five clients, and for, I can't remember who asked the question, I forgot to write that part down. But for our purposes, a group consists of two people. So for, and that's part of the, the state and the county regulations, that we consider a group of two or more people. So our groups go anywhere from two to five clients. Excuse me.
And so you, so you do, typically right now, you do two group sessions in the morning between two and five people, which could mean between four and ten for the total of the two groups.
Right, but not all at the same time.
I understand that.
Yes, yeah.
And, and then additionally, you see eight to ten individual clients during the day.
That would be the max.
Okay, and do you, and how about group counseling in the late afternoon or evening?
We typically have a group that starts at five and goes to six-thirty, and then we have another group that goes from seven to eight-thirty.
So you have two, so you essentially have four groups during the day?
Yes, sir.
And those run from two to five folks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so roughly speaking, you could have anywhere from sixteen to twenty clients in group settings during the day, and another eight to ten individuals per day. So you're talking, let's say, on the outside max thirty patients in a day?
Yes, outside max, yeah.
Okay. So let me ask you a question, you mentioned that you have ten spaces by your calculations, and in fact, one of the, two of those spaces are the garage behind your suite of offices
Yes, sir.
That you're renting. Are you paying rent for that garage?
No.
So the property owner is just letting you use those spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that'll trigger a staff question to me. And help me understand how this CalOptima transportation service works. You said it's, is it, it's a private, it's, it's an owner, it's a private owner of an automobile, and they contract with CalOptima to provide these transport services for your patients?
I, I believe they actually use Lyft and Uber, oh, no.
Okay.
Yeah, Lyft and Uber, so they have a, I believe they have a contract with those type of, of companies, and then when a CalOptima beneficiary needs a service, they have a phone number that they call specifically for that contract, and then they, they arrange the transportation with that particular driver.
So it's similar to a municipality having a dial ride service for senior citizens, they'll contract with a cab company or what have you.
You know, I'm not really familiar with that, so I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just, I'm just citing it, I'm just, now I'm talking to myself, which is a really bad habit of mine. So what happens if one of your patients isn't, like CalOptima is through Medi-Cal? What, what happens if they don't have insurance for that ride?
You, you mean, what, what happens if they lose their Medi-Cal?
Yeah, what, so is, I guess I'm wondering is, so all, all the, all the folks who aren't able to drive or indigent and can't afford a car, they either use public transit or this CalOptima service?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And you are claiming in your letter that there's a hundred and forty-eight unreserved spaces or shared spaces within the complex. Where did you get that number?
I physically drove around the property and counted them.
And the property owners indicated to you that those are unreserved?
Yes.
All right, that's my extent of my questions for now, Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Russell, and then Vice Chair Harland.
Mr. Chairman, I believe my hand was raised from the last time I lowered.
I, 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 I mentioned you first, you're up, and then Commissioner Russell, and then Commissioner Harland.
Okay.
You're good to go, you're up, Commissioner Colbert.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Wells, for the presentation, just a couple of questions. I believe you answered my question regarding the times of operation for eight-thirty, but I, I want to process this question because you just threw me for a loop right with what you just said. You did the counting for this site?
I did. I, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand, you said, I did the counting of the parking spaces?
Correct.
Yes, I drove around the property and counted.
And confirmed with the other tenants that these sites would be, these spaces would be unavailable, correct?
No, so the difference between the two spots is, so in front of each unit, there are signs in front of the spot that says reserved for, and then there's like a suite number. The non-reserved spots do not have any signage.
Okay, I understand now.
And they're around the perimeter of the property, not attached to any particular unit.
Okay. That makes sense, and in terms of, I think, oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll probably have to come back to this question, but it's related to the amount of individuals that are there at the site. I think from my understanding, it could be twenty-four to thirty people, because you said two groups of eight to ten, and then sixteen to twenty, and the sessions run from basically an hour and a half, correct?
Oh, sorry. Was, was that for me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, the group sessions go for an hour and a half, and the individual sessions typically go for forty-five to fifty minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'll come back to this question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Russell?
Hi, yes, I wanted to talk a little bit about the adolescent program. Now, you said that you have a, a contract, what percentage of your, of your clients are the adolescents?
I, I would say probably less than five, right now, we currently have four adolescent clients.
Oh, okay, so it's not a significant part of your
Very, very small, it's really difficult to get an adolescent client into the, into the street.
Yeah, that's, that was part of my question, you know, age group and things like, all right. And there was, there was once in your map, the extout portion, so that's the park, that's your, the garage area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that doesn't have anything to do with your square footage?
I, I don't believe so, I'm not sure if that, that was counted in the, it's not counted in the fourteen hundred.
Okay, I think every, I think my other questions were covered by other people, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Vice Chair Harland, and then Commissioner Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question following up on Commissioner Russell's last question. You noted that there's only less than five percent adolescents. Do any of the adolescents participate in group counseling, or is it just individual?
Well, so that varies quite a bit, so the adolescent clients, depending on where they are, so I would say two of the four adolescent clients that we have now currently live in a group home. So it's a little bit more difficult to get them to come for group sessions, so we just try to individualize our treatment with them as much as we possibly can. We like for them to participate in group sessions. It, it's a little bit more clinically helpful that way, but again, it just depends on the, the individual adolescent and where they're living, and what's their, what's their current situation.
And, and do you treat them usually after hours, after five o'clock?
Typically, yes, because the, the kids are typically in school till, till two, three, four o'clock, and then their parents have to bring them here when they get here to their group home, yeah.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Zick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Welch, for your presentation and for the kind of work you do, which I think is clearly a, a need in our society. My first question for you, do you do any prescription of drugs? Do you prescribe any drugs as part of your service?
A hundred percent no.
So it's primarily a counseling service, correct?
Yes, sir, talk therapy only.
Okay, very familiar with that kind of work. So you make a reference in your letter, it happens to be on handwritten page ten, that you're only one of two other Medi-Cal program providers for adolescents. First of all, just a semantic question, says you're only one of two other providers. Does that mean there's three providers total?
I apologize, no, there are only two in all of Orange County.
Okay, where is the, what city is the other one located in?
That's Twin Town, and I believe they are in, I want to say Garden Grove, North County. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure of the city.
So help me understand this, that's not particularly relevant to your application per se, but with Orange County having three million people, not all of whom are well-adjusted, present company excluded. I'm surprised that there, why, why are there so few, why are there only two providers? I, I don't understand that, how could that be?
So there, there's been a recent change in how, so the state government agency that handles Medi-Cal treatment is called the Department of Healthcare Services, we call them DHCS. So before, two years ago, anybody that wanted to provide substance abuse treatment with Medi-Cal was called a straight contract, so you had this contract directly with the state. As of two years ago, it actually started in July, two years ago, they started what's called an ODS system, where the state contracts with each individual county, and then the county then becomes the primary overseer of all the contract providers that are within that county. So anybody who was a drug Medi-Cal provider prior to this had to then apply to become a contract provider directly with, so the government agency in Orange County that, that monitors that is called Healthcare Agency, we call it HCA. So Healthcare Agency is the government agency that we have a contract with in order to provide substance abuse services on an outpatient level for both adults and adolescents. And it's my understanding that the county is desperately trying to seek more providers because of, of the, the vast number of people who are underserved. And I'm not sure if you guys have, have seen or heard that, you know, there's been a large number of these very large private companies who see clients from out of state. They bring them from out of state with their PPO insurance, and then they kick them out, and then these, these individuals become homeless here in Orange County. So what we're trying to do is get them connected with some, some, some state or some county support so that we can get them off the streets, get them treated for their addiction, where these bigger programs are just dumping them after not being able to bill their insurance anymore. So that's kind of why we feel, you know, at our company, that we're, we're, we're really providing a service that many of these other programs are not providing, and it's so desperately needed to get these people the skills that they need so that they don't have to be homeless with their addiction anymore.
Okay, let me take another run at this question.
I apologize.
So this capability you have, that only one other provider in Orange County has, is specific to adolescents, correct? Not adults, but adolescents?
Yes, sir.
And so you're telling me that other than you and one other provider, there's no other place for adolescents in Orange County to go who require counseling services?
Yes, sir.
No other psychologist, no other guidance counseling professionals?
So this is for substance abuse treatment only? So if a, if a, if an individual, an adolescent has, has Medi-Cal or CalOptima here in Orange County, they're, they're welcome to see an individual provider for therapy, and, but that's under the mental health benefit. If they're trying to get treatment for substance abuse, they have to go through an Orange County contracted drug Medi-Cal provider.
Okay.
We're one of two, two that are currently present in all of Orange County.
Okay, hi, I think that helps me a little bit. So my next question, let me start with this question going to Chris, if you're still there. You've got in the staff, I say you, we, in the staff report, the condition of approval number three, specific to the operation, that primarily is trying to ensure or address the parking shortfall, as it's been analyzed, by having group counseling be after five PM, that's the primary objective, I think, of the condition of approval three. My question is, if you can answer it, when was the nature of that condition of approval communicated to Dr. Welch? When was the first time he was aware that staff would have a condition of approval restricting group counseling to after five PM?
I believe it was last week on Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, so it wouldn't have been this week when we all got the staff reports and for the first time even knew what was contained in it, he would have known a week ago.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so Dr. Welch, here's kind of the question I have about this. What I'm, what I'm thinking to myself is, if I'm you, I see staff preparing a report that puts a condition of approval on this minor conditional use permit, that for all intents and purposes is a showstopper to your business. You can't possibly operate your business the way you want to with that condition of approval, and you know that a week ago. And what I'm struggling with is, what happened in the intervening days between when you first found out and now, in terms of you trying to deal with that, or were you hoping that at tonight's meeting with this analysis and these recommendations, you would somehow get us to make this deviation even more? I, I'm, I'm, I'm scratching my head on this, Dr. Welch. Help me understand what your thought process was when you saw a condition of approval that effectively prevents you from operating your business? I, I want to understand what, what, what you were thinking.
I appreciate that, the email that Chris's department sent out went out six-thirty Thursday evening, so I did not find out until Friday morning, so I've not had an entire week to, to process this. And when I discussed my concerns about the condition with Chris and with other local politicians, the suggestion was that I plead my case with the planning commission, who has the authority to amend the city planning department, their recommendation. And that was their, their best guidance. I didn't, I didn't know what else to do.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. I, I'm not sure I would. I'm not trying to offer suggestions as to what I would have done had I been you. I understand your response. You've seen the correspondence that we've received from the public regarding this item?
Yes, sir.
Which is almost unanimous in terms of their concerns. And so in my mind, I'm putting together that that body of concern about your operation. And that's even with group counseling being after 5:00 PM. They're still concerned. And now I'm trying to think about that along with your request to actually have the group counseling during the day. So that's not a question for you, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to respond to it after all the public has had their, or chairman runs the meeting. But you'll have another opportunity to talk. And you might think about a response to my concern there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Colbert, did you have an additional question?
Yeah, so just wanted to get clarification on this. Following Commissioner Zick's question, Dr. Welch, you're stating, you stated that by state guidelines, two is what you consider a group, correct?
Yes, sir.
So it could be a couples session in the morning and not one of the the larger group sessions that would be typically held in the evening hours. Is that correct? I want to kind of get this distinction.
Would you repeat that one more time, please?
So you said that it's two by state guidelines, but you also stated that your largest group is no more than five. Are you stating that the larger groups, which are more than like three, three to five people, are typically held in the evening hours? And then those, the couples, the couples, maybe what, for whatever marriage or whatever other counseling services you provide are typically held in the morning. But you would need the condition of approval to allow you basically to have more than one person in the office being, receiving service?
Yes, sir. And for the purposes of what you're asking about the group session. So if a couple were to come to us for, for marriage therapy or couple therapy, we would not consider that a group. The group designation of two or more is a Medi-Cal determination. So it would be only for the clients who are coming to us from Medi-Cal. So and we, we don't do couples therapy for Medi-Cal. We only do substance abuse for Medi-Cal.
Which is a large percentage of your base, from my understanding.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're on mute, Mr. Chairman. You're on mute, Mr. Chairman.
About that, so open the public comment.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have one more question, if that's okay.
Sure.
And goes, I, I, I want to, we've got semantics here, and I want to be clear about. I, let me ask Chris this question. Chris, when you say group counseling in the staff report, are you by definition meaning three people or more?
The staffer's report was written with the distinction of individual and couples. And we we intended group to be more than two.
Correct. Okay, so Dr. Welch, I understand the, your response to Commissioner Colbert, that you could have two people, and based on the insurance thing, you would call that a group counseling. But clearly, the intent in the staff report, as it's trying to deal with the parking situation, the use of the term group counseling is three or more. So when you say you want to run group counseling during the day, if that meant only two people, then in my mind, that's the same thing as the couple counseling, because I'm not the insurance guy. I don't care about the insurance. You do, obviously. It's your business. But if it's three or more, that's the group counseling concern that the staff report is trying to deal with from a parking standpoint. So I want to know, when you say you need to run group counseling during the day, would that only be groups of two people? Or would that involve groups of more than two people?
Our, our hope is that we could run groups during the day from two to five people. Yes.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, so opening public comment. I see two folks in the queue who wish to speak on this, and we'll begin with Mr. Fowler.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I did want to compliment you, Chair, and Commissioner Russell for your comments about restaurants and hospitality businesses in Costa Mesa as an investor in several of those. We really appreciate you helping people be aware of the issues facing restaurateurs and other owners. So thank you for that. I'm the co-owner of Unit D4 in the park here. And this has been a revelation for us because my partner, when approached on this, was told that the counseling was online. We did not understand at any time that there were going to be twenty, thirty, thirty-five people going in and out all day long. And our understanding was that occasionally they may need to use one of the parking spots. We're not there all day. And so we were being a little bit generous. But once COVID is over, we anticipate being at our business much more frequently during the day. And we, we do evening work as well. And that involves fabrication and work on automobiles. That's what most of the units in the park are used for. So at a minimum, that might be disruptive to people doing counseling sections, sessions next to us. But I just wanted to make the commission aware that, based on everything we've been learning this evening, we're going to withdraw our agreement to provide parking spaces because we did not understand that to be a permanent commitment or a full-time commitment, for that matter. And so on that basis, until we could better understand, we're withdrawing that commitment, number one. Number two, we would ask that the commission defer approval of the application until we can better understand whether that commitment is essential to Dr. Welch's business and any other accommodations that can be made to make this all work out for all concerned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, very much for your comments. Mr. David Purcell, you're up next. We'll get you, and you're permitted to talk. If you'll unmute, you're good to go. Mr. Purcell, you've got to unmute your.
Get you, and you're permitted.
There you go.
You're good to go.
You want to talk? Yes, you may. Listen, just go ahead.
Unmute your.
Do you want to delay?
You're just talking.
Yes, you may.
Just talk.
Oh, yes, this Dave Purcell. Oh, are we on?
We are, but you're on a delay. I need to have.
Dave Purcell, Unit A1.
Oh, yes, this Dave Purcell.
Well, I'll just, just.
I need that, I need that.
I agree with everything he said. I've been there twenty-five years, and I adhere to the CCNRs. It's a wonderful place to do business because we follow the rules of the parking. And that's all I want to say, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I adhere to the CCNRs. It's a wonderful.
Okay, and then we have telephone number ending in one, one, one. The screen, if you can go ahead and put them on. Telephone caller with the, there you go.
Yes. Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Sarah Rollins. I'm a property owner of one of the properties in the area and then also a homeowner in Costa Mesa. I had the opportunity to listen to what everyone said, and I appreciate what Commissioners Zink, the questions that you raised, I thought they were very good. I'm concerned, one of the points I had to address was the fact that at the other properties, that in order for them to meet the parking requirements, they needed to basically gather parking from other units. By doing so, they effectively render those units unleaseable or unoperable because there's not enough parking to go to those units. So now with D4, with Mr. Fowler withdrawing, it seems as if the parking has a problem. Additionally, the fourteen oh six of parking that was mentioned in the application is actually from the tax assessors role. That is the footprint. It is not the rentable square footage. It does not include the second floor of that property. And if you look at the assessors roles for all eighty or ninety-five properties, there are basically three sizes. There's quite a bit of second floor construction that's been done in all of these units, and that's not been put into the, to the tax role. So one of the things that's happening is this parking requirement is based on a lower rentable square footage. Secondarily, the second floor back, the back stuff is also first and second floor. I'm concerned for the fire life safety of that because in order for them to exit out of that building, they're going to have to go through that back section. And in the event that that door is locked, that's quite a bit of a fire hazard that there's not two ingresses and ingresses out of that property in the event of a fire. That causes me quite a bit of concern. Secondarily, for the back, you people that are in the back, they wouldn't be able to go forward and exit as well as in a fire. I appreciate the fact that the client is helping the, the customers that are curbed by these rehab facilities. But we know that those clients are kind of, can cause problems in the neighborhood. And as a homeowner, that causes me a lot of concern as well. I think the thing I'm concerned, I went to their website, I hate to keep saying concerned, but I am. I went to Wellmore's website, and they went on their outpatient, if you go to their website for the outpatient substance abuse, and they talk about that the outpatient substance abuse program offers counseling for a minimum of three hours of services per day and three to five days a week. That's not what the applicant mentioned to us. So again, I find a lot of these things, I don't have much time I have left, but just incongruent with what I'm hearing from him saying and what his website is saying. So I think I'm done with my time, and I appreciate this opportunity.
Okay, ma'am, thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Michael Crossley. Go ahead, sir.
Ah, Michael Crossley, Unit H1, Mesa Business Center. There's, it's, we got kind of short notice on this, and considering the use and everything. I've talked with a lot of the owners, and I have found one that is happy with the use of this. Considering the parking, we were told that they had the two, two gifted to them and the two for D5 and D6 and one inside. So there were seven spaces available, and we couldn't understand why they needed more spaces. And this is, it seems to be a lot of question about what's needed and what's not as far as the people coming and going. The, the people are coming and going are indigent, and I can't figure out where they're picking up and taking them to at no later than ten o'clock on the bus. We've had constant problems with homeless in the area. And I'm concerned with people coming in and going, oh, this is nice. I'll just stay here. This is, I, I've been there, I bought my unit in nineteen ninety-one. And I was aware of this unit when they first put on the market back in the eighties. So I, I really like the complex. And one of the things is the parking, it's very important to all the owners. It changes the whole complex if you start dishing out spaces without having the reserved spaces. Property values are going to be an issue. One big thing someone mentioned is there's two bathrooms and a kitchen. Kitchens are not allowed in these units. Fire department would be all over that in a second. We've had people have their premises removed by the fire department in the past. So I don't know where that's coming from. There's, oh, boy. Let's see, the substance abuse, you know, this counseling sounds great, but it's substance abuse one way or the other. Where, you know, we've got some interesting people coming in at all hours of now the night. And, you know, nobody is there to really monitor this. This isn't a great area. I don't know what we're going to do about that. Uh, let's see, what else? Is there any way, if these people do break, if they by chance get this determined or whatever, if they break their agreement, can we have them removed? We, as you said, there were two other units in the area that had what they're asking for. And from what I understand, nobody really is motivated to deny them this once it's installed. And given.
Thank you, sir. Yep, thank you. Three minutes up. And all conditional use permits can be called up for review if there are violations of the conditions in those CUPs. I see no other members of the public with their hand raised on this item. Miss, oh. I think Mr. Rollins, did we already hear from Mr. Rollins?
No.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. This is Charles Rollins, property owner, Mesa Business Center. I want to thank Commissioner Colbert for his opening statements. I thought that was really mindful. And I also want to shout out Chris Jaeger for his prompt email responses. That was very helpful during this process. I wanted to point out a possible discrepancy in the office space. The stated fourteen hundred and six square feet is the footprint, according to a YouTube video for Seven-Eleven West Seventeenth, that exact unit. They are advertising eighteen hundred square feet. And the X-Off area is the high ceiling quote parking area behind that. So these units are two thousand square feet. And if you watch the YouTube video, he has an additional four hundred square feet of mezzanine, possibly making this a twenty-four hundred square foot unit way different than the fourteen hundred square feet requested. Also, the quote, two parking spots that are inside, it is very difficult to get two cars side by side, even though technically you can drop two cars in there. That doesn't mean that you can drive them into that space and park them. So I would question those two spots on property. And as other people mentioned, the fire hazard. Second story, mezzanine people have no way to get out if there's a fire in the staircase. But that's the fire department to worry about that. Also bringing to your attention, according to the City of Costa Mesa's Planning Commission, the guest parking spots along Seventeenth Street may be lost due to future widening of Seventeenth Street. So we may lose even more external guest parking spots. The industrial zoning allows for production fabrication assembly, which may extend past normal business hours. These are permitted business activities, and they do create noise, like a couple of people mentioned, grinding, pounding, fabricating. The walls dividing these units are two by four framing with drywall. There is no insulation. During the day, I can hear my immediate neighbor muted conversations through the wall. I would not, I want to protect my right in the future to be working during regular hours or after hours on my business production without interfering with my next door neighbor. And right now, since we're all industrial, we don't have that conflict. Is it, the park was built as a combination of office up front and warehouse workshop fabrication in the back. There's a very limited number of these units available in Westside Costa Mesa. That is why we're, we're zoned industrial. There are many more office parks, which are a much better fit for this applicant. It's not that we're denying operation. We're just suggesting the Planning Commission that suitable office space is available on West Nineteenth Street and in the Bear Bristol location, actually where this applicant comes from, where existing group counseling businesses have already gotten conditional use permits for operation and already operating in a business zone, which is more conducive to the, the quiet office type relationship. All right.
Okay.
This is, I'm sorry, I, I request the Planning Commission to deny the conditional use permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to speak to this, please hit the raise hand button. or are there any phone callers on the screen?
Chair Dayar, Kobe, have no phone callers.
Okay. See no other comments, I will close public comments. And Mr. Welch, or Dr. Welch rather, if you would like to provide any responses to anything you've heard from Commissioners or the public.
Yes, I would just like to say that we have a long history of being a good neighbor. If people have concerns, they're welcome to come to us. We're committed to resolving people's concerns so that we and they can provide constructive businesses unimpeded. The, like we said in the very, very, very beginning, the vast majority of the services that we provide now are via telehealth. Very few people come physically to the property. We're not sure how COVID is going to change the nature of mental health services, whether or not telehealth is going to be a continued primary mode of providing service. We procured the ten parking spaces, not because we believe that we are going to need them, but just in case, because Chris said that the number of spaces that would need to be considered was required to be seven. So we got ten just to be safe. Again, because vast majority of the clients who utilize our services do not drive, I just still do not think parking is going to be an issue.
So Dr. Welch, can I ask you a question? So if the majority of your work with your clients is going to be through telephonically or telehealth, how do you do that with your group counseling session? Does everybody call in or?
Yes, we use a phone conferencing system and the clients are given, they're all given the same phone number and then each client has a code number that they enter in and then it's a conference call type situation, almost like what we're doing right now.
And this current space you have on Bristol is smaller than this space?
Like by a couple, by a couple hundred square feet, yeah.
And you're basically have twenty to thirty clients a day going through that space, correct?
Max.
Okay, max.
Yeah.
So.
The average, I would say maybe ten.
So is it your anticipation that, or your hope or objective, is that at some point you will return more to in-person counseling services versus telephonic services?
I'm really not sure. It just kind of depends on the guidance that we get from the government about what Medi-Cal wants to do with their clients. There's a number of our clients who we're allowed to do individual sessions in person, but they're still not wanting to come in. So we continue to provide those services via telehealth. So I'm not really sure how people are going to want services after all of this is over, how it's going to change. Everybody keeps talking about the new normal. I don't know that the new normal has been defined yet. I don't know how our industry is going to be transformed by what's happening now.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Chair, if you don't mind, I have a few items I'd like to discuss.
Mr. Jaeger, please.
Just for the information of the commission here, condition number three, it was drafted when staff was aware of the additional parking coming from Suite D six. That was before any other additional parking was discussed or before any garage parking was discussed today. And in addition, if there is a full kitchen in there or if there is any, if the occupancy needs to change, that would be a requirement that any TIs be obtained, tenant improvements be obtained to meet all required codes. And that's a building.
Mr. Jaeger, let me ask you a quick question. Do we know for a fact, well, first of all, kitchens allowed in our code in the MG zone?
Kitchens are not allowed, break rooms are allowed.
So, and we describe a kitchen, a kitchen becomes a kitchen when it has what in it?
Full appliances.
Okay. Okay.
Cooking appliances.
Okay. And have, we've examined the CCNRs for the complex, do they prohibit kitchens in these units?
I have not seen that in the CCNRs. I can scan through it and see if I can find it quickly.
Okay. Let me ask you one other question. So how do we define gross square footage in the city? Is it, is it the actual footprint of the building? Is it the usable square footage? Is it the leasable square footage? What is it? What is gross square footage? I'm going off of the previous zoning administrators, zoning administrators determination of one or four per thousand square feet of gross square footage. What is gross square footage in our dictionary?
I can also assist with that, Chair. So gross floor area is the total square footage of the building, whether it's first floor or second floor. It's not necessarily usable space either, it's total gross square footage. And we've talked about it probably at this commission a lot of times related to parking. What I would point out here, however, is that although parking requirements are calculated based off of gross floor area, the minor conditional use permit for parking in this case is based on the unique operating characteristics of this use. Therefore, that takes us out of the calculation of parking based on square footage, of parking based on gross floor area and pivots us to more of a conversation as to the functional needs of parking for this particular use. So what staff is looking at in this particular case is have the applicant demonstrated that there is enough parking available to meet the needs of the use as it's been described and as staff has conditioned it. So that's how we've looked at this. So as a result, I think you've heard a couple of different square footages here tonight, based on whether you count the garage or the storage area or some of the other square footages that were very difficult to confirm. But since we're going through the minor conditional use permit process for deviation from parking requirements, that square footage is not as relevant as does the commission believe that there's adequate parking based on the function of this use as it's proposed and as it's conditioned.
I completely understand that and believe it or not, and I think I've said this so many times, I think that's how parking ought to be looked at, generally speaking. So I understand. Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing and then see if there's any final questions of staff. I see Commissioner Perkins and then Vice Chair Harland.
Thank you very much. I do actually have a couple of questions for Dr. Welch, if that is still appropriate in this time, Chair.
Well, then I'll reopen the public hearing and go ahead, Commissioner Perkins.
Thank you. So for Dr. Welch, I know in your letter you had brought up a timing issue regarding needing to be able to move into this space to maintain your medical space or to maintain your clients and whatnot. And I was wondering how that has been, if that has been resolved, what its current timing is for your potential moving to here on that. So that's my first one.
That part is on hold with the state DHCS. They're waiting for the zoning clearance form that Chris has from their department to be signed. I'm guessing after the results of this meeting or, I'm not sure. Yes.
And I guess one thing, as one of your letters seemed to imply that there was, for you to maintain your counseling, there was a time issue on this. So is that still the case that you need a answer from us very shortly?
Yes, the county is pushing very quickly to get this resolved so that I can get the zoning clearance up to the state so that they can change the address on my provider number.
And then another question, we heard a number of public comments about concern about noise from adjacent neighbors, being able to hear from the other units. And this is obviously in industrial zoned area. I guess I was wondering, what are your thoughts on that concern about noise? And maybe even in a broader sense, you know, what is causing you to move into this area? And I don't mean that in a negative way, I'm just curious what led you to choose this area and.
Right. So for the noise issue, we've been in an office that also had very thin walls and how we've successfully resolved the problem, not only for our neighbors but for ourselves, is we utilize white sound machines in the room so that they block noise from outside and prevent people from hearing what we're talking about. I apologize, what was the second half of that question?
So, yeah, second half of that question was, what sort of is motivating you, if you can share it, if not, don't worry about it, to move into this particular property? And what led you down the road to move to different locations?
The move process or the selection process actually took over a month. We toured, I'm going to guess, maybe fifteen different locations in Costa Mesa. This was the only property that had an onsite bathroom, which is important for our substance program so that we don't test people in a public bathroom that other neighbors possibly might be utilizing. So that was the big draw for this particular unit that we really liked. Also, if you don't mind, I know you didn't ask this question, but it seems to be brought up. I mislabeled the floor plan. We do not have a kitchen. We have a kitchen sink and a refrigerator for the staff to put their lunches in. There are no cooking appliances. I just didn't know what else to call it at the time and I was trying to meet a deadline with Chris. I just really quickly wrote the word kitchen and it is not a kitchen. It has a sink and a refrigerator.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Harland, and then Commissioner Torje.
So actually I had another question for Dr. Welch. Given what you've heard tonight, I just want to be clear. Is your position on condition number three that you still want that modified by the planning commission?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Torje.
Did I hear you correctly saying that you're doing testing onsite?
Yes.
Okay.
Urine.
Yeah, I hadn't read that anywhere and I think I'd missed that if it was included in the report.
And Dr. Welch, if I could follow up on that, that's strictly like urine analysis, that's just urine samples. You're not taking blood or anything.
Absolutely, no blood and we primarily use saliva.
Okay.
There are some occasions when, I'm actually the only male right now. So the only way that a male client can be tested in the bathroom is if I'm present. Our female counselors can't do that. So that's why we utilize both saliva and urine. It just depends on the gender of the client and the counselor present.
All right. Commissioner Colbert.
Just one question, kind of following that line. Will you potentially, following Commissioner Perkins' question about what I guess provoked your move to this area? Is it a need for larger space?
Yes, so the way COVID affected us was we weren't allowed to do any more in-person. At the beginning, we weren't allowed to do any in-person services. So we needed to utilize more phones and the unit that we had only had two places for counselors to use a phone in a separate room. So we had to spread out a little bit so that more clients could be seen via telephone.
Okay. And once you get to this location pending approval, there will be no expansion of services or anything? Would this just be like, are you potentially expanding your services? Or serve clients? So this would just be what you're doing now at the current location?
Yes.
And just an expansion due to COVID requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, closing the public hearing. Any final questions for Commissioners? Punch your raise hand button if you want to discuss or make a motion. Just love this. Okay. Commissioner Zick.
I really wanted to give somebody else a chance to do this, but I don't see anybody willing to raise their hand. So we'll see if there's agreement about this. So I'm going to make a motion. And it's a difficult motion for me to make because I'm moved by the sincerity and personal nature of Dr. Welch. I'm moved by the importance and value of the services that he provides. I'm influenced by the care with which he is trying to run his business during these challenging times. But at the end of the day, we are a land use commission and we have a staff analysis and a staff recommendation that provides some guidance to how I look at these things. And so I will, I find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, under CEQA guideline, section fifteen three oh one, existing facilities. But I move that we not approve zoning application twenty dash fifteen because the nature of this business, as we have learned tonight, is different than what has been analyzed. And even the analysis was looking for an exception to parking. What we learned tonight puts additional pressure on that parking. What we learned tonight is adjacent property owners not willing to provide the support of their parking that they had initially thought that they could. And as much as I like to see businesses succeed, we're not in the wish and hope business. And the analysis here says this is not a fit. That's my rationale for my motion.
Okay, I'm going to offer a substitute motion. I, I think there's potential, but I'm not ready to vote yes tonight because there's a lot unanswered questions that I, I feel like, I feel like I'm just in a cloud of flies right now because I'm getting mixed messages. I'm not exactly clear how this is going to work. We have a condition of approval that is set forth that the applicant disagrees with, which if that was, if he was absolutely dead set against the condition set forth in number three, I would have to vote no because I'm going to go with staff's recommendation on that. But I just get the sense that, you know, this is a legal non-conforming property. It's supposed to have four hundred and forty-four parking spaces, it has like two hundred and ninety-eight. So anybody coming in for the application would probably need a deviation of the parking if they were looking for a different use. The parking doesn't hang me up so much particularly for the reasons that Ms. Lee pointed out that, you know, we're kind of looking at this as a unique use. I think if condition of three was adhered to and agreed to by the applicant, you essentially have staggered use. So I just don't think parking is going to be a problem. I think generally speaking, that if most of the businesses have cleared out by five and you have your group counseling at night, that it's, 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 it probably works. But I do have some other questions and I would, I'm going to make a motion for continuance. I'm going to see if I can get together the applicant and clarify some questions that I have. And maybe the applicant can work, clear up any misunderstandings with the surrounding businesses, business neighbors. So I'm going to move that we continue Adam to second meeting in September. That may be, that may be from Dr. Welch's, probably not quick enough. Let's say it's today, the tenth. That may be that may be from Dr. Welch's probably not quick enough. Let's say it's today the tenth. Let's say the first meeting in September. I'm sorry, Miss Lee, if if you think we're gonna be um okay with that, we can get a month. To see if um. I have a chance to get together with Dr. Welch and kind of maybe work through some issues and talk to some of the other property owners. Um, so I'm gonna move to continue to the meeting of uh the first meeting in September. I don't know the date.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Russell. So well, we have a we have a most substitute motion on the floor for continuous, the first meeting in September. Uh, any comments on that substitute motion? Uh, Commissioner Colbert, your hands raised. Okay, Commissioner Russell, do you uh have any comments on the substitute motion?
Yeah, yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. I probably come from this from a kind of unique perspective. I ran a a nonprofit in this. On this property for another two or three years, and it was it was more in line with what uh is happening. With the counseling than it was with manufacturing. And, you know, we didn't have any, we didn't have any issues. We had a very similar population. But I I feel like uh they there's there are some questions. I think needs to do perhaps some more outreach to the the president of the. The uh, it's not homeowners association, but the ownership organization, get a little bit more support from the the neighbors. Uh, and then to also just clear up some of these questions about how many people are gonna be there and when they're gonna be there and how they get there. It's just it's I'm a little fuzzy on it. So yeah, I think we should put it off. I hate to say no to.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Perkins, thank you, Commissioner Russell.
Yeah, thank you. I think um, you know, this this brings up tough issues of compatible uses. Um, which is, I think, uh, you know, obviously one of the founding reasons for zoning in the United States. Uh, and it it also brings up the as we expand and as our economy changes, we may need to adjust and sort of shift. Where we uh allow uses and and thoughtfully consider what is compatible. So I do like the idea of uh giving us some more time. To allow the parties to talk to each other and and for us to work with them. Uh, one point I I especially want to make though is it seems like, once again, our our discussion of land use policy and and what people can do with their land. And what business owners can do is coming down to cars. Um, w- we in the city mandate that every car has a home. Like, that's even understating. We mandate that every car has multiple homes, uh, multiple places to park for every car that we have here. Um, but we don't mandate that every person has a home, or that we even build enough housing for that to to be the case, to bring it back to issues we've talked about before. And and in this case, we're seeing concern over having sufficient housing for cars, creating hurdles to those who are trying to help. Those uh who in our community who are arguing among our most needy, um, people who do the situation and don't even have cars or can't have cars. Um, you know, I hear residents in the city talk a lot about wanting to take care of the homeless problem or solve the drug abuse problem. Uh, in in a very vague, you know, wave of magic wand to make this go away and and um. Our applicant here is is actually trying to do something about these issues. Um, and so I hope we are able to find a way to make this work, to be good neighbors and to try to help. Uh, support uh what sounds like a fantastic business that is really helping those in our community who are most needy and helping. Resolve issues that many in our community agree with are major issues. So I hope we're able to find a positive solution.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Torje.
I also have compassion for the for the applicant in terms of um, you know, we're we're talking about parking in a. Lot that seems like there's a lot of parking in it and um, you know, it's, you know, it requires. It requires a lot to be able to to operate that business in a place where where he's looking for it. And I also support a continuance because I would like to make it work, but also when I think about the ways in which the. The other owners of the property and the other tenants there are going to be experiencing the use on site. Um, and so I think having that conversation and getting more clarity specifically on what the land use is. Um, as Commissioner Zick said, we are a land use um. And zoning, like this is our our um, our whole job is to is to think about land use in that way. Um, I'd also like to just bring up again, um. However, I don't know if it's part of the motion, um, or if I'll make a, if we need a separate motion after to actually look at. What our parking designation is for group counseling. Um, just keep that on our radar.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Torje. Uh, Commissioner Zick.
I'll support your uh motion for a continuance. Um, I uh. I'm certainly full of hope, as many people are, that additional time and additional conversation. Um, might uh result in different conclusions. I think there might have to be some different facts in order for that to occur. Uh, so I'm hopeful that uh. That we uncover different facts. Um, otherwise, all we're doing is kicking the can down the road and costing this applicant uh time. In making decisions and alternative plans, which um he may need to do anyway. Um, I share a lot of the passion that Commissioner Perkins expresses regarding cars. And I get that. What I also get is that there's property owners other than this applicant who have rights. And their rights include the ability to drive their car and park at their business. Their rights include to have customers who want to drive their cars and park at these businesses. That's their right. And we're not taking care of cars at the exclusion of people. We're taking care of property rights. That's what we're doing. We're doing the same thing with restaurant owners when they have parking lots. We say you have to have a certain amount of parking. Why do we do that? We could say you don't have to provide any parking if you don't want to require every customer to walk. But what if that isn't what occurs? What if what occurs is people still drive their cars? And instead of parking at the restaurant, because there's no parking, they park in in front of the residential neighborhoods around the restaurant. And put the burden on them. That's not fair. That's why we have parking rules. That's why we have. Our ordinances. Um, so I'm not against cars. I'm not a hater of cars. I'll support the motion for continuance.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Colbert, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just really quickly, um, out of curiosity, I know the applicant, the public hearing has been closed, but. Just would be curious to see what his thoughts on the continuance would be, um, as the. The need for operation on uh condition of approval number three seems to be pretty standard. I think the information that he provided um was sufficient for me, um, that he would not be able to. You know, run or operate his business um at this location um with these requirements. And so I was just kind of curious to see, you know, what his his thoughts were on the continuance and then secondarily. Uh, the nuisance um issue that was presented by the community related to the use being in that area. Um, I noticed that um, you know, that that's gonna be, you know, it kind of is what it is in terms of that use being there. Um, if it works, but in terms of, you know, the applicant obviously has identified a way to. To uh mediate or work with the the challenges of the surrounding uses. Um, and hopefully won't have any, you know, challenges in the future or or whatnot. I I'm just curious to see. Uh, um, you know, what changes in the future, you know, in terms of him being able to operate. I don't know what new facts, uh, operational factors would would change, because he seemed like he kind of exhausted all of his. His options he found out and I just don't see what changes in the future from today.
Okay, so um, Ms. Green, if you could see if uh. Uh, Dr. Welch is still with us, if he can let him talk. Uh, Dr. Welch, I have two questions for you. Uh, does the continuance to the first meeting in September uh essentially scuttle any plans you have for this property, one and two? Uh, is the condition of approval number three has to be changed? You can't live with it the way it is.
Um, so the the first question, could you repeat that for me again?
First question is if the if 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 we ask you to wait in a continuance till the first meeting in September. That'll give me time to meet with you, me time to meet with the property owners, and any of the other commissioners want to do that? Is that, does that uh, is that uh, hang you up uh completely on your business plans? Do you need to move quicker than that, in other words?
You know, I'm not sure. I I need to take a look at that.
And is condition of approval number three absolutely you have to have that change or it's a no go for you?
Again, I I'd have to take a look at it. The the ideal situation would be able to provide services during the day.
Okay, so do you have some thinking to do, which it just affirms that uh continuance is probably. Um, at least in my mind, probably uh a nice middle ground way to go versus just flat denying it. So um. Thank you very much, sir. Um, so Julie, there's a substitute motion on the floor to continue the first meeting in September. Please call roll.
There, dear Nicole.
Hi.
Vice Chair Harlan. That was I, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Perkins.
Hi.
Commissioner Russell.
Hi.
Commissioner Torje.
Hi.
Commissioner Zick.
Hi.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners. Um, and Commissioner Torje, I completely agree with you. Um, our land use matrix and indeed our entire code, I'm sure, and this Lee is among a million other things we've got to deal with. We'll get around to those things, because I looked at our land use matrix and there's uses in there that um are old and outdated. And obviously new things coming up that we need to look at, and I know other jurisdictions are doing that, so I I completely agree with you on that. Um, let's take a, let's come back at eight twenty. Let's take a quick break. Thank you. Let's take a, let's come back at eight twenty. Let's take a quick break. Thank you.
The zoning, it is a zone MP industrial park and it has a general plan land use designation of industrial park. This type of zoning district, it is intended for a variety of industrial and other compatible offices and campus-like settings. And the property, it is surrounded by similar MP zone properties. And then the one planned residential development, which is on the, just to the north.
You know what? And I'm sorry, just reminded me, Mr. Jaeger. Commissioner Colbert, I think you had a recusal you had to make on this.
I didn't know when you wanted me to make it.
I should have actually remembered it and I didn't, so we'll back up and, go ahead, sir. Commissioner Colbert?
Yes, so I would just like to state that I live within 500 feet of this property. So I'm going to recuse myself from the vote and I will be turning off my video now.
Okay, thank you. And then Ms. Green, if we could have Commissioner Colbert wait in the waiting room and let me know when that happens.
Um, he is in the waiting room.
Okay, and I apologize Commissioners and staff for that oversight. Okay, Commissioner, Mr. Jaeger, please go ahead.
Okay, continuing on, the existing development is, the site contains two attached industrial buildings. They were constructed in 1970 and 1975. And they contain ground floor office and warehouse space and second store mezzanine office space. And the existing buildings do include three total units. And as I mentioned, a lot line does run right through the center of the middle unit. The project site, it is currently undergoing renovations and it did have a building permit issued BC 20-00019. And this did include pretty much an entire remodel. And it includes the demolition of the second story mezzanine levels, as well as construction of new lobbies, remodeled bathrooms, infills, truck wells, and the loading dock. There's a variety of different electrical and plumbing work, new windows, skylights, ADA upgrades, trash enclosures, landscaping, parking lot striping. And it is important to note that this permit was approved prior to the condo conversion being submitted. However, it does comply with development standards, whether it is an industrial condo or just an industrial building. In total, the building permit is including the demolition of 14,590 square feet of mezzanine space and adding ground floor additions of 3,327 square feet. And that's being constructed at the lobby space and at the rear for additional warehouse space. The non-residential condo conversions, it is facilitated by a conditional use permit. And the request for this application, it is to convert the existing industrial buildings into a three-unit industrial condominium on one lot. And this would include ancillary common spaces. With the conversion, the three units, they could be sold independently and they could be privately owned. And the ancillary spaces that would include the common areas, so the parking lots, the landscaping, all of those areas. Overall, the operation of the facility, it would remain relatively unchanged from the existing use. And the parcel map, it is to facilitate the condominium project. And it will be required to be recorded prior to the sale of any condominiums. The code does require that all development standards be met. And they are doing that, including meeting the setbacks, parking, open space and landscaping. And the FAR, it is being reduced from point four nine to point four oh with the demolition of the mezzanines. As part of this application process, the applicant is also required to submit a variety of different reports, which I'm sure you all went through in that staff report. And these are all intended just to make sure the building is safe. In addition, they are required to have building division inspections, which they are going through with their existing building permit application. Overall, again, the proposal will not change the land use and it does comply with the development standards. It will just result in the suites being able to be sold as separate airspace condominiums. So in addition, the subdivision, it is consistent with general plan policies and goals. It meets the zoning requirements and staff has included standard conditions of approval. So I'd like to recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under both 15301 Class 1 existing facilities and 15315 Class 15 minor land divisions. And to approve the planning application 20-06 and tentative parcel map 2020-113. With that, I'll make myself available to any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Okay, seeing no, Commissioner Perkins.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. I saw that we're, the applicant is removing about almost 15,000 square feet of usable area. And that's reducing the FAR down to point four. Question is, was that reduction in FAR due to the city requirement or was that being done by the applicant?
That was proposed by the applicant when they submitted the building permit application.
Okay, so, and I can follow up with them on that. Question number five, just more informational on that. Question number, excuse me, condition of approval number five, page nine. I just had a question on, it just, the wording on that one feels a little bit awkward to me. So recommended the project incorporate green building sign, which is great, although as far as I'm aware, it's required by state law. And then the last sentence just feels like it's kind of hanging there. It's like Cal Green code or higher as determined by applicant. What are we trying to say by that? And I just, I guess when I'm reading this over, I don't, I don't quite get what we're pointing out with that sentence.
I will agree, it is an awkward condition. Essentially, what this is doing is encouraging the applicant to go above and beyond what is required by Cal Green.
Okay, got it. And so I guess I just wonder, is there anything? It just, again, it feels awkward to me. I was wondering if that needed to be reworded or clarified, especially what the last sentence was meaning. So, awesome. That's all my questions I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Any other Commissioners' questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present and has any comments. Yes, we have. So we'll begin with Yafin.
Thank you, and good evening and good night. No comments at this point, unless you have any question.
Okay, and then we have, thank you, sir, and then we have Mark. You have comments? Are you part of the application?
Yes, I'm the owner of the property and you so much for your time and such a late night working on this. To answer your question, as we purchased this property, we tried to bring it to current compliance. And the reason for the reduction in the square footage was to bring the building in compliance with the current zoning, which only allowed point four FAR. So we did demolish the complete second floor of the building, which was 14,000 square feet, to bring it to current compliance. As a result of that, of course, the parking went from 1.9 per thousand to two, almost 2.8 per thousand parking. And this building, other than the shell, it is going to be basically a brand new building. It has brand new roof, brand new skylights, all new LEDs, new electrical, split up into three suites. We have added three new entrances with brand new front glass that's been put into the building and all the ground and all the landscaping is being completely redone. So the building is going to be virtually brand new once it's done. And the reason for the separation we're seeking was to be able to possibly sell them separately as smaller units are much more desirable than a 52,000 square foot, single tenant type of building. And I appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? I don't see any hands raised, so I will go ahead and open public comment on this item. Any members of the public wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, and I see none. Ms. Green, are there any members of the public on the phone?
Chair DeRico, no, there is not.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment. And ask if there are any more, any questions of the staff before I close the public hearing. Okay.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, Miss Lee.
I'd just like to clarify the wording of condition of approval number five that Commissioner Perkins raised. It appears there's some word processing error happened at the beginning of the sentence. It really should read compliance with the California Green Code is required. And a higher level of compliance is encouraged. And I think with the comma as determined by the applicant is fine. And the intent there, as Commissioner Perkins and Mr. Jaeger stated, is to encourage a higher level compliance than with the California Green Code. But I think somehow there was some words missing there.
Okay, so Miss Lee, can I ask you a quick question on that? Because condition of approval number nine also requires California Green Building Standards, California Energy Code. And I know we have a new sustainability manager. We recently, the city, do we have a climate action plan? A formal climate action plan?
We do not have a formal climate action plan. We do have a new sustainability manager who's working with us on a variety of policy changes. So we hope to talk more about that with the Commission at the appropriate time.
Okay, so the, yeah, the only reason I say that is, is I don't think conditions should encourage or recommend anything to anybody. I think there ought to be requirements or nothing. So that's just my general, general feeling about that. So, okay, so I close the public hearing unless there's any comments by Commissioners. I'm going to move, find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act under CEQA guidelines, section 15301 Class 1, existing facilities, and 15315 Class 15 Minor Land Divisions. And approved planning application 20-06 and tentative parcel map 2020-113 to facilitate a non-residential common interest development conversion, subject to the findings in Attachment A and Exhibit A and the condition of approval Exhibit B. Is there a second? Vice Chair. Okay, great. Thank you. A motion on the floor. Any comments? Commissioner Perkins.
I just had one, and this was a realization that I came to as I was reading this over, that we have a building here that our current codes have required that we reduce the amount of usable square footage in. I think this is a good example of when we write our codes and when we update them, I think we meet unintended consequences, something we've talked about before. But floor area ratio is designed to try to look at, you know, what's, how much building is on an area? How much usable space is on a plot of land compared to how much open space is left? And a lot of that leftover open space really is aimed to be parking. And so parking requirements and FAR almost go sort of hand in hand to some extent, although they are different areas of the code. I think it's just a little disappointing that we essentially required this applicant to remove 15,000 square feet of usable industrial space solely to meet this FAR. And in that's past, that's water under the bridge. But I think we maybe need to look at these things carefully and wonder, I think we want to encourage more space and less in our city. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Any additional comments? Okay, Julie, please call the roll.
Chair DeRico.
Hi.
Vice Chair Harlan.
Hi.
Commissioner Perkins.
Hi.
Commissioner Russell.
Hi.
Commissioner Torje.
Hi.
Commissioner Zick.
Hi.
That motion carries six zero with Commissioner Colbert recusing himself.
Okay, and if, thank you very much. This decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Ms. Green, can we have Commissioner Colbert back with us? There he is. Thank you, Commissioner Colbert, for your patience. We didn't want to leave you in there too long. Okay, so that brings us to Public Services Report. Mr. Mahia.
No items to report tonight, Mrs. Chair.
Development Services, Miss Lee, do we have any reports tonight?
None this evening, Chair.
Okay, City Attorney, Mr. Tarquin.
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay, so I think we're, we are not going to have a second meeting in August. Is that correct, Miss Lee?
That's correct. We're looking to cancel the second meeting in August. Our next meeting will be September 14.
Okay, great. So we'll stand in adjournment to the regularly scheduled meeting of September 14, 2020. Good night. Stay, be well and stay safe.